For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you. We have one addition to the agenda. It's a financial reporting policy that we will have to take care of a little later in the meeting. Any other changes, additions to the agenda? One wishes to make?
If I remember correctly, sorry.
Yeah.
Last year, we reversed the order and put the review of the meeting minutes after. So the board reorganization came before everything else. I don't know if anybody cares to do that again this year, but the motion was made last year to do that.
Oh.
It doesn't matter.
Good memory.
Yeah, that's what you did last year.
That's what I usually do.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go into the reorganization. Election of a Chair.
I nominate Judy Fraser.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Motion to close the... That position?
So moved. Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close them? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so to... So here I am. Go easy on me tonight. Okay, so I'm going to move to elect Ben Curtis as the Vice Chair.
I move to elect Bruce as the Vice Chair.
Is there a second on Ben?
I will decline the nomination.
Is there a second for Bruce?
I'll second him.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vice Chair. Okay, next move to appoint the Board of Water Commissioners. Is there a motion to appoint the Select Board as the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to move to have the Board of Sewerage Commissioners for the... by the Select Board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, to adopt a regular meeting schedule, is there a motion to keep it as is with the second and fourth Monday of the month and Tuesdays following each holiday?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Designate location for posting notices. Normally, they're at the library, town offices, post office, and we last year designated the Brandon Reporter. Is there any changes?
Well, I think that's the newspaper of record, right?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped down, yeah. So is there any differences? Anybody want to change those locations? Everybody okay with that? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Designating the newspaper of record. Last year, Brandon Reporter was the newspaper of record. Is there an alternative or do you want to stay with the?
So I would move to make it the Rutland Herald only because of the weekly publication schedule. We ended up with the Herald and the Reporter, so moved to make the Rutland Herald the newspaper of record.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The policies were put on your table tonight, I think. Board Select Board Rules and Policies. Were there any changes or notations that you wanted to make?
I apologize for not getting them in the packet.
Oh, that's all right. I opened them up in my email.
We've all seen them, so.
Can I make a suggestion going forward that the agenda is reduced to only those items that we're addressing in the evening? Because I feel like lots of times we carry over item after item and then we just kind of get bogged down in them. Unless you feel they're of importance, but if they're not really a hot topic or there's nothing else to report. Everybody okay?
Sure. Happy to cut it down.
Okay.
I use it as a reminder.
Right, right. Sometimes it'd be a nice look at one page.
You want one page?
Feel like we're going to be out of here. Okay. All right, so is there a motion to adopt the Select Board Rules and Policies with that change noted?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we can go back up to the meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 24th meeting minutes?
Is it maybe missing it because I've got two copies, so.
You've got two copies of them?
Yeah. I thought they were really thick and then I realized it's...
It is really thick.
Did anybody get?
But I think he... I don't know if you noticed, it goes from page to page with the same title.
Oh, yeah.
Because I did the same thing before.
Yeah, you got one.
Yeah, it's just one, never mind.
It is very thick.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minister approved. Okay. Open public comment. Is there the sign up sheet? Does somebody have the?
Up next, Judy.
Thank you. Okay. Heather Martin? Do you want... do you mind going to the podium just so they can... We're going to be sticklers now. We'll do it to everyone, not just you.
Is this on? Okay. I am here because I'd like to shed a little light on some of the parking situation that's been going on in my area. So I wrote kind of a little description on a little bit of history that I think does have some bearing on the situation going on.
What street do you live on?
High Street. So I'd like to speak on behalf of myself as a business owner and manager, but also as a resident of Proctor. I'm aware that there's been complaints called into the town regarding parking and/or traffic on the High Street Circle that intersects with Pine Street, the little circle that's not by... not on the way to the elementary school. This section of High Sh... yeah, not on the way. So I... the background information is as follows. I've actually been harassed relentlessly for years by one of... one or more of the residents in the High Street, Church Street area. It's been going on since I was Director of the Children's Center. I've brought with me a list of false complaints that have been called in against my business at Baby Steps, and there's two reasons why I have decided to do that. The complaints have absolutely no basis in reality, and I have a great relationship with state licensing and one of the most highly regarded centers in Rutland County. The complaints match the same pattern of complaints that were called in against me at the Children's Center for years on end. For example, the first complaint that came in when I opened Baby Steps was, "Director is never present." I had a great conversation with the state when they came to talk to me about that. My teenage daughter had her first summer job that year, so she was using my van to go back and forth to her work.
Excuse Mrs. Martin, how does this involve the parking?
I'm going to get to that in one second.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Yep. So they were basically tracking my van. I haven't brought this up before because it hasn't affected my career, so I've been too busy to deal with it. I wanted to add that I've spoke to my neighbors and none have approached me to have a conversation about parking and/or traffic. And I'd like to think that if it wasn't issue, that it would be the first step. The reason I bring it up is because the parking complaints are part of the harassment. It absolutely does have bearing on what's going on. The parking complaint... it's a list of false complaints. The parking complaints are nothing but just issues being fabricated so that I can be harassed continually. I'm... can I finish speaking?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So I don't have any proof as to who it is, but I do know that I believe it's Jo and Stephanie Manning, the people in the greenhouse, have been photographing and videotaping my children and parents without permission on multiple occasions. She has come out of the house and screamed and sworn at one of my teachers when she arrived for work. I've heard them standing on their lawn staring at my house, discussing my business with the neighbors. Before I opened, I came to a meeting like this and described my business. Neighbors had an opportunity to raise any issues at the time, none of them did. So it was agreed that parents would use the driveway to drive in, drop their kids off, and staff could park in the driveway or park on the street if necessary. So what I typically do is have two staff park in the driveway so that the rest of it is available for parents to use to drop in. And the clients that I have are mostly parents with infants, so they have like, you know, the car seat and the diaper bag and all the heavy stuff to walk in, so they need to access the house. So occasionally, there is a car parked at the end of my driveway, like kind of on the grass just off the road. Once in a while, when we have a really busy day, we do need to park two cars, but that's... it's very few and far between. I also want to bring up that a parking ban on that street would impact the business of Baby Steps, which would then in turn impact the business of the Children's Center. I have designed a partnership between the Children's Center and Baby Steps. I've sent 11 kids over to the Children's Center in the last year, and I've, you know, created that situation so that families in the area can have childcare from ages birth to three. I'd also like to outline that while I was at the Children's Center, I expanded care for children over the years. And right now, Proctor is actually one of the only towns outside of Rutland that actually has childcare. People in the state of Vermont very often can't find childcare ever, and they wait for years. And we actually don't have that issue in our town because we have it available.
So can I just ask, so where are... where are the complaints about parking? Where are you parking that they're complaining about? On the sides of the road?
Yeah, if there's ever... like, I don't... there... no one's talking to me. So what happened? How am I getting... because Bob Coons actually called me in December, I believe, and he was completely exasperated when he talked to me on the phone. He's like, "I've had just this neighbor calling and calling and calling. You said, 'I'm completely sick of it, I don't know what to do, and if it doesn't stop, I'm just going to do a parking ban.'" So to me, if you're going to institute a parking ban on an entire town because one grumpy old neighbor is calling in complaints on a business, that is disgusting. Like, I have brought so much business to this town, and to be treated like that is horrifying.
Is this the one that we dealt with before?
So as a resident, I can say that occasionally there is like... If my daughter has a friend over or something, like I have kids, so she might have a friend come over, and if my business is open, the friend might have to park on the street because the business is using that. So occasionally, there might be a car parked on the street that's not related to the business. And then in addition, like, I have a lot of kids and a large family, so we have, you know, get togethers where family comes over on the weekends, they might want to park on the street, but like, every resident in Proctor should have that right, so.
So people who drop off just drop off?
Yeah.
Or do they stay?
No, they drop off. They're there for like, less than 10 minutes.
Last fall, when this came up last fall, I happened to drive over the street. There was a car parked on your side of the street. I went over an hour later, it was still parked there.
Yeah, I mean, without knowing the date or the car, like, I don't know if that was like a house guest or an employee. I'm certainly willing to like, track what's going on, and it could have been a situation where if it was an employee, it might have been a busy day. Like, you know, I'm certainly willing to discuss it and actually speak to the neighbors if there is a legitimate issue, but any neighbor I've spoken to has said, "Nope, that's... there isn't an issue. It's just this one particular person just causing an issue." And there was a third because before the Ubers moved in, they used to stand on the lawn and all of them discussed me together, pointing at my house. So, yeah.
Not against the law, is it?
Neither is... neither is following all the rules that I've been following.
Select Board.
Yep.
So they earn anonymous complaints.
We had a complaint that his, I believe, his driveway, he wasn't able to get out of his driveway because cars were parked across.
Yeah, I've talked... I've talked to that neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah, and just the only thing I ask is if the people have an issue that they actually speak to me.
Oh, if you could... did you get... you got a permit, right, when you had your business? And did you designate where parking was at that time?
Yeah.
So you're not taking both sides of the street up?
No.
So if there are...
Nope.
Cars parked on both sides, then it becomes an issue?
Oh, it could be, yeah, but I've never had cars parked on both sides of the street.
I don't know, other than talking to...
Well, I... you're just requesting a not a parking ban.
Yeah, not a parking ban, and also I'd like to know, like, I've been dealing with the harassment for years with no consequence, so I'd like to know what the town can do.
Okay, you know that... you know that.
Maybe go to the source that you think is... and just try to explain to them, or, you know, that you think is the biggest complaint.
Yeah. I mean, I'm trying to like, not get in a back and forth fight with neighbors, and I don't think I should be punished for being respectful.
Little communications goes a long ways.
Exactly, both ways. So if they communicated with me, that would help too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Understand your problem. Freaked you out.
Justin Lindholm.
Okay, I'm Justin Lindholm from Mendon. Just a couple of legal points for you people to be aware of and maybe look into it on that Chittenden watershed land. They're very simple. One was brought up by Frank Urso. He said vast and catamount have a continuous right up there during the town meeting. And I've talked to people from the Chittenden Damers Association, and they said they don't know of any continuous right. They do an annual agreement. So that might be looked into. They definitely don't have a right of prescription, which means they can use it forever. And... but I don't know where Frank came up with that idea because it's puzzled the people up there in Chittenden. The same with the Catamount people. I think it's an annual agreement, so not a legal right forever. Another thing that was brought up by John Gerlach on another legal point. He said Proctor could wake up and go, "You know, there are liabilities with this. We're cutting off the public. We can't do this anymore." He said that quote to Vermont Public Radio. But Vermont has a law. Anybody who hikes on anybody's land that's not posted and anybody who hunts on it, as long as they're not charged, there's not much for liability. So that's another thing, maybe look into that. I'm not a lawyer, but it would be news to me if there's a liability for letting people use unposted land. I wouldn't think you'd want to go around and post all that stuff for a liability purpose. I certainly wouldn't want to do that. But anyway, the land, I was up on there nearby it today. It's very easy to access if somebody wants to walk, anybody from the town wants to walk up there. Beautifully easy to get to through New Boston beyond Mountain Top. They take Forest Road 99A. It's a nice, easy walk up there, if anybody wants to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim. Are you going to talk?
No.
Okay. You don't want to... Okay. All right. Yes, Mary Cohen and Tyler Richardson. You did?
Yeah. Where would you like us?
If you want to come up here so the TV can capture you.
Should it be yours, you want to? This face isn't TV ready. Pass it please, if you wouldn't mind.
You guys don't mind just introducing yourself, just so?
Sure, sure. See some new faces. I'm Mary Cohen, I'm the Executive Director of the Rutland Region Chamber.
And I'm Tyler Richardson, I'm Executive Director of the Rutland Economic Development Corporation.
And what we're doing, we're doing here is giving the town of Proctor an update on the regional marketing initiative, which has been... Proctor's been a supporter in this actually since we began. This... we are now in our third year of marketing, and the goal of our marketing is to get people to move here. We have a problem with our population, we have a problem with workforce, and what we need to do is get some people to move here. So it has been, always been a 10-year plan. We knew we weren't going to change the population overnight. So we started three years ago, marketing first to the region, and now we are really expanding our boundaries.
Yeah, thank you so much for your support over the years since the very beginning. Couldn't do this work without you, and we're here tonight to kind of talk about some of the successes and some of the direction that we're looking, going forward.
Do you have those handouts for most of the third Proctor residents?
Certainly.
That would be great, while you're talking.
I don't know if we have it all of, you know, enough for everybody. So we started year three with a new marketing firm. As you may have recalled, for those who have been here in the past, Mondo Media Works was our marketing firm out of Brattleboro for the first two years. And unfortunately, they were unable to fulfill the contract at the end of last year. So we had to go back out and get... and do a new RFP, and we hired a new marketing firm, which is Lift Marketing, which is located in Saratoga Springs. The principal at Lift Marketing is Abby Andrus, and she is actually a Castleton grad, and she has a home in Killington. She's extremely familiar with the area. They are a really widely recognized and very good marketing firm, so so far, we've been super pleased with them.
Yeah, in the first couple of years, we were able to gather a lot of assets from the region, a lot of creative assets, a lot of videos, a lot of pictures, and we were really impressed with the new marketing firm Lift coming in and not wanting to recreate that, not wanting to recreate an approach, but to use some of the stuff we've already done, which was just more cost-effective and more efficient for the process.
That's right, as you recall, you know, we put a pretty good investment into the videos that we created and a lot of the marketing materials, and we didn't want to just scrap what we had. And that was a big part of our decision, too. They admired what had been done and agreed to use some of the raw material that we still had plenty of. So we started, and we had... to expand our market, we decided we were going to do two things. We're going to travel up and down the northeast and look for urban dwellers that are sitting in traffic and are not having fun and would rather be mountain biking. And we were also going to try to attract people in the mountain towns out west, where if they're at the base of a ski mountain, the cost of housing is just astronomical and they're not able to do that. So we call them the urban dwellers, and we call them the outdoor adventurers. And this year's marketing campaign is all digital, again, using a lot of the materials that we already had. One of the first things they did was revamp our website so that if you visit our website, you will be asked to download a guide if you are interested in moving to the area. And this is what the guide looks like. We're super pleased with this. We had an initial goal of getting 5,000 new leads of people who were interested in moving to the area, starting from September to this upcoming June. And I can tell you that we already have... 4,600 of those leads, and it's only been six months. So we're very pleased about that. We've had almost 2,000 people download this guide to, you know, get more information about what it's like to move here. And we've had over 8,000 new interactions with our website in just the six months.
And to download the guide, you have to put in your email address. And so if, I don't know, if you're like me, getting it going on the internet, you don't give your email address out to anybody. So that, that kind of shows to the seriousness of their... of the engagement. Plus, we kind of have a little sales funnel there, so, you know, whether or not they move here tomorrow, we can continue to kind of interact with them and feed them information as the campaign continues.
Right, so what is different from this year from even year two is that it's less about awareness and more about capturing real serious leads. We continue also to work closely with the Vermont Department of Tourism and the State of State Program, where they're inviting people to come for the weekend, and we hold a community reception for them and then connect them with the Vermont Department of Labor or, if possible, any employers on Monday morning. Our first one of this year happens to be this weekend, and it's up at Killington. It's a ski-to-stay weekend, and we have the most number of participants than that we've ever had. We have 28 people signed up to come, which represents 17 new families, all confirmed and ready to come. So we will have again a community reception. This time is going to be on Saturday night up at the Killington Grand. Killington has been extremely generous. They're giving them ski passes for the weekend if they would like to try skiing. We've got some hot yoga passes. We have, you know, directions to the farmer's market, whatever it is that they want to do. And then on Monday, I think there's at least 15 people that are going to meet with the Department of Labor and learn about job opportunities. So we continue to do the other ancillary activities to make sure that once we get these leads, we keep these people here.
And it sounds like they're kind of coming from all over the country, from as far west as Washington State and what have you, so it's getting a lot of reach, which is exciting.
This weekend, we have Washington and Missouri and Delaware, Florida, Pennsylvania, a couple from New Jersey, from Long Island, somebody from Massachusetts. So we are really getting a widespread reach. This year also, what's different and probably why our numbers are so high this time is that our market, Lift, has also taken this State to State program and has promoted it, so it's not just coming from the Department of Tourism, it's also coming from our program. So we're seeing the numbers increase, which is a real positive thing.
It's pretty exciting.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Lisa?
Is this exactly what you're printing out when you go on?
It's a digital download.
Yes.
That this exactly does.
Yes.
So how are you promoting Proctor? I flip over here to education and obviously, you know, Rutland County. And that was my question last year when you came. What are you doing for us in Proctor? You're doing it in Killington, you're having Rutland people come. If you're looking for the outdoor adventurers, there's no better place to bring them, to Proctor. We have a carriage trail that puts you from Rutland here. So I asked last year when we signed up and committed funds to you, and when I looked through this, once again, I see Killington and Rutland as being the benefactors. I mean, we have a sign hanging over in our high school that we were just ranked number eight in the nation or in the country in for our high schools, but the only thing you're talking about is Rutland High School. Why is that? Why aren't other communities that have given funds, why isn't there a mention of it? Is Proctor mentioned in this handout?
Actually, Proctor is not mentioned specifically in this handout. I will say that this is really just meant to be a snapshot of the region. We are trying to hit all the different towns in different ways. Proctor was really instrumental in that first year when we had a video that highlighted a lot of the Proctor assets. And we're trying to get to all the different towns. I know Middle Town Springs, too, was really... would like to be represented a little more, and Wallingford and...
I guess I'm going to accept that as a snapshot, but you specifically say Rutland High School in here. You're not giving an overview of education that's available in Rutland County. You are not saying there are X amount of number of high schools, that there are communities that school choice exists in. Those are big things that families are moving to this area. Those are big families that live in, instead of whether you're living in a community with school choice or not. I am just as disappointed as I was when you came and did the video, and I don't think that it showed great assets for Proctor. I think we give the money, you come and give a presentation, and everything that comes talks about Killington and Rutland. And you have our money to invest to sell Killington and Rutland. If you were serious, and this is what you're talking about, being outdoor, this is a town you should be highlighting. Beaver Pond, Otter Creek, The Falls, all of those things. Any of that mentioned in here?
Could you do me a favor and contact me with me... contact me with all the information?
You, I talked to you about this the first year you came here, about that, and sent a list because you showed the video on the wall here, and it was disturbing, and I sent that. And here we are in year three, still supporting you, and Proctor is still a supporter of Rutland City and Killington.
Well, actually, we're regional organizations, and so we represent the whole counties.
What is, is Proctor in this handout?
Well, I'm happy to take any help that you can give me to make this a little bit better.
This... we are continuing to build this over the years, and again, this is supposed to act as a snapshot. And I'm definitely... I'm definitely... we definitely hear your feedback for sure.
A snapshot is an overview of the entire region. When you start listing individual communities and talking about what they have, you're talking about that they offer instruments up to third grade. That's a snapshot of Rutland City. That's not a... That's not a snapshot of the Rutland region. That looks like that's where education happens. We're very proud of our education here.
As you should be.
We're very proud of our students, our school, our athletics, all of the things that we have going on. And this is a snapshot of Rutland High School, period.
Well, this isn't the only, this isn't the end of their experience when they're, when they're reaching out to us. When they're coming to this town in practice, putting it out in, in practice, when they're coming to the region, they're getting introduced to, to the entire region, and that, that's a fact.
How?
Do you have, do you have a, when they come this weekend, and it's a nice weekend, do you have a brochure to highlight the outdoor activities that are available in Proctor?
We have all that on the website, which is, which is how we promote it. So when they, when they're coming to visit and they're looking at the, at the region as a whole, and they're looking at the county through the, through the website and through a lot of the digital creative collateral that we've developed over the last three years, that's what they're looking at.
When they're on the mountain at the ski-to-stay weekend, is there a handout that says, if you're an outdoor adventurer, Proctor has one, two, three, four, five, plus Rutland has?
I don't think we do, but I would, we would love to work with the town to develop that, and, but we'll definitely, we would definitely need your help.
So what are the opportunities that you are advertising at the grand?
Well, this particular opportunity is a ski-to-stay weekend, and so the Vermont Department of Tourism works with the Vermont State Ski Association, and they've created this specifically geared towards people who really like to ski and want to come to the mountain and then learn how, how they could perhaps stay. We're also doing two others in this, this year, and they're going to be more themed towards industry. So in June, we're doing a healthcare weekend, so we will specifically be targeting those who are in the healthcare industry, and in October, we're doing one for manufacturing. So those are a little bit different than the ski-to-stay that's in Killington. All of them have different flavors to them. We're going to have a small career fair at the Rutland Regional in June for the healthcare. We're going to do the same for the manufacturing firms in the region in October. If you'd like to help us better promote Proctor and have things that we could share, we are more than happy to. We have welcome bags and we put different information in there about different things, and we are happy to add anything from Proctor.
But you still didn't answer my question. My question is, what are you offering in this weekend? So you're just saying there, there's skiing because earlier you said something about the farmer's market and all these other
Yep.
things that were going on.
Which are all things in Rutland.
Which are all things in Rutland, so I'm asking, what exactly are you offering for them to do?
Well, this is, the, the, the ski-to-stay is a little bit, is kind of a side thing from, from the regional marketing campaign. Ski-to-stay is a Vermont-wide thing, so this, this particular weekend is dedicated to this, to skiing up on the mountain for sure. But what they're being exposed to when they're here is a lot of these other creative assets that we're, that we're promoting the entire county through, through...
That's what I'm asking, what are those?
They're on the website right now, realrutland.com. It's, county says all 27 towns in the, in the county. We've worked with the town of Proctor to develop some of those assets that are on there. So you'll see, I'm losing my, my word here, drone video footage of Proctor that, that was taken a couple of years ago by, by Mondo Media. And a lot of the stories on Proctor, we've worked with, with the, with the town to develop, to develop that collateral. So definitely room for improvement, and that's why we're, why we come to these, these meetings, to get this feedback. And we would like to continue to work with the town to help kind of build, build those, that collateral.
I think it would be, I think, from what everybody's saying, that it would be an advantage if this is your main marketing tool and this is what people initially grab first, that if you kind of peppered things throughout of Proctor, West Rutland, Flarnedon, things like that, yeah. Just so even though, you know, like, thinking of moving, what's interesting isn't all geared towards, say, Proctor, but maybe the education pieces or something else, and then job opportunities are, you know, kind of, just, just so people will look through this and see that we are part of Rutland County.
You could have just said Rutland County Schools instead of saying Rutland City Schools. It would have been a simple, easy...
Agreed, agreed. It just might have been a little bit of a function of getting the accurate information about the county as opposed to one particular school district, so.
Which is all on the DOE website. It's easier for...
Okay, thank you.
So, and I would just say that we all know quality of life is usually the number one reason people move, and we know that in, particularly in Proctor. I would guess if outdoor adventures are one of the two that you're marketing towards, I'm rather surprised that you're not doing something like that. Biking, kayaking, do some kind of race like they do from the Carriage Trail over. It really does seem, and I said this, this will be the third year, focused in Killington and Rutland City.
Any other comments, questions, anybody? Do you have anything further to say?
That's all. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Hey, good stuff. Everybody's chomping at the bit for great stuff.
Lisa, go.
Oh, Division Four varsity men, state champions.
It was a great game.
Awesome.
Western girls are playing tonight. Proctor girls play Wednesday, and finals are Saturday. So there are a lot of other things going on that are great, that just doesn't find to be the primary focus.
That should be the headliner.
Those are the 72 hours and probably the headline in Rutland now.
Anybody else have anything?
Heard Joe's name mentioned quite often.
He's a good boy.
He is. He's a good representative of Proctor, yes he is.
We are doing National Honor Society induction on the 18th, and proud to say that three parents of National Honor Society inductees are, those that have been inducted are in the room. So we have a nice group of kids, and Ben has a plan coming out.
We do, April 3rd and 4th, we're doing Mary Poppins, and it will be, I think, the best you've seen yet, so, but that's just my opinion. No bias whatsoever. But I do want to say this, Otter Valley was screaming from the rooftops that they had 34 kids on, well, kids and adults on stage for their play, and we have 20. And in case you weren't aware, we're a little smaller than Otter Valley, so.
Great, that's awesome. All right.
The turnout for the town meeting was better than average, that was nice to see.
I was super, super excited to see the number of people that brought their kids to election and to town meeting, that was awesome.
All right, lots of good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to go out of select board meeting into the Highway Department?
Second.
We need a motion. We need a motion for Highway Department?
We always move, we always moves that makes motion.
For Sewer and Lines.
That's it.
Oh, okay, sorry. My bad. Note to self.
You have the right to be wrong.
Okay. All right, managers report.
Okay, you've got your, your Highway Department, and a lot of it was routine-type stuff that we've been doing right along, with the exception of potholes which have been catching specific attention
They're everywhere.
All the way through. It's all deliveries, you've got the update in, in your packet, and we've got three loads sitting in the shed right now, so it's about 120 tons. Hopefully, we don't order anymore.
Right.
About 6,000 over, which if you looked at last year, we were 6,000 over last year also.
It is what it is.
Be nice if we didn't have to use it again. Fortunately, I know. Okay.
Firewood, John promises me he's going to have his firewood all bucked up by October next year and not be doing it in the middle of winter when it's 20 below zero. Sewer line repair on High Street, which I'll pick up in the sewer department, but the highway guys were there adding it for a whole day. And we made 50 bucks on scrap metal.
Nice.
Or tire.
Help the budget.
So any questions on the Highway Department?
Just, what kind of damage, was it just the blades on the plow? It says plow damage. Was it just blades?
It was sod that was dumped in a person's driveway.
Oh, the plow caused it?
Where they caught it with the plow and it, where it dumped was where the opening was for the driveway, and all of a sudden it was sod, so they went up and removed the sod.
What street was that on, Sam?
That was on, uh, High Street.
Okay. High Street's popular.
And they don't know where the sod came from yet, or they didn't when I, when they cleaned it out. They may have come off Pine Street. Right there on the corner, the driveway, Boez. It's, they, it was a big pile of, I couldn't believe it, but it, there was a big pile of sod that got plowed up there. You didn't lose it from your lawn. And they will be hosting the county highway foreman's meeting in March, which is a couple of 20, a couple of weeks away. So they got to clean up, finish cleaning up the shop and get the heat going.
Oh, there's a culvert down on Eden Avenue that seems to have sunk in. It's a good speed bump.
It's a turret, that's what I call it.
I wish you had, um, Kerry's in.
It is, it is worse, but it's been there a while.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It goes down in the summertime, right? It's frosty.
Yeah, it's been there for a while, and I just happened to
Now it's a good...
notice it when I was there the other day.
Okay, Vtrans, class two paving grant.
Okay, what you have is, we talked about it at the last meeting. I think the big thing is that it's the same project we applied for last year. However, last year, it was less than, uh, it is this year because I raised the prices for asphalt. What it means is that we'll have to, the maximum grant is 175,000. We're going to have to chip in a little bit more of our monies this year if we get it. And again, I'm not very highly anticipating that we will get the grant, it's just a matter of continuing to apply.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
This is, as I say, this is the first mile of West Street from the town line up to where we started paving four years, five years ago.
Traffic and parking ordinance.
So Carrie and I have had a chance to meet. We spent a lot of time on Google Earth looking at every single street and trying to evaluate which ones might be an issue with parking and which ones are absolutely not an issue with parking. And so we're in the process of culling together the list and reaching out to residents to get feedback, which I think we'll do sometime next week probably, so. We're moving forward with it and trying to be as thorough as we possibly can.
In keeping with Judy's request, and I would not show this on an agenda unless you
Yep.
ask me to put it on.
Exactly, perfect.
All right. Okay, salt usage, you already talked about. Anything else? Oh, the new business? Okay, now, can I have a motion to go into the Board of Water Commission?
So?
Thank you. Second it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Managers report on this?
What you've got is Simon's report, and they had a couple emergency-type operations, but the, just as a reminder, we do get charged when they go into emergency operation, anything on the overtime. And nothing super serious, they're still meeting the contain, the permit requirements. We did have one problem, which was the pressure-reducing valve on Field Street. We had a complaint of chlorine on the north end out in Chip and Pittsford, in the farmhouse, and one high-pressure report right there in Williams Street. They still haven't figured out what is going wrong. They've got the expert on the pressure-reducing valve that's supposed to be here this week to get it in. So hopefully, they get it. The big pressure, the chlorine, there was no logical reason for why somebody was getting excessive chlorine. The pressure, the high pressure on Williams Street was because the valve is saying wide open, which is leaving 150 PSI going out into that neighborhood, as opposed to the normal 90 that goes out.
Contract number six, construction.
Okay, this is the letter that went to the residents of Holden, few people, all the affected people on park, plus a few people back to the high school. But we'll see people driving around in trucks there.
Looks like they marked the street
Yep.
earlier this week.
Yeah, they've been in, and they are making calls for surveys, for seismic survey. I don't know when they will get to people. But this was just to alert people, it's coming up. The one thing I forgot to put in here was the name of DuBois, or Du, yeah, DuBois and Kings resident and his telephone number, so that people could have that. But I will get a telephone listing, we're supposed to get a listing that we can pass around to people.
Yeah, they should be done with that, all the videoing, week after next, next, this, this week and next week, they should be able to complete all that.
What does that mean, videoing what? Houses?
Houses, yes, four.
How is that possible? They don't even make calls to everyone yet.
Well, they've started making calls. I chatted with the gals this morning, in fact.
So I guess the information would be helpful since not everyone has received a call.
Well, they're only going to start construction until the end of the month.
Yeah.
I understand that, but some people have received calls about having their property assessed and having them come on camera, so it was my understanding everyone was having that done. Not everyone has received a call.
It's a 508 number.
I'm just saying, I'd like to have that information.
Maybe we can check with them to see where they are down the list, if they're going, making calls at, like, you know, so many a day or whatever, if there's some being made and some aren't, it's kind of odd.
I doubt if they can do the whole area in a day.
Right, oh, yeah.
No, they're...
But I'm saying they should, I would think that they do so many a day.
Yeah.
Let me call Beldon and see what their schedule is.
I've got that phone number for the...
I don't want to call them, I want to call them.
Yeah.
I called
Yeah.
DuBois and Key, they called Beldon.
They called Beldon, right. Okay. There's no delinquent account report.
Delinquent accounts you don't have on your desk.
Right.
Because I didn't get them this week.
Okay, okay.
Are weather's getting better, though?
They're getting better. We got one more signed one today, or yes, this week, last week, and with an idea that the person's going to be selling anyway, and we'll collect it when he sells. He's got back property taxes as well as back water and sewer taxes.
Anything else new or old business? Is there a motion to move into the Sewerage Commission?
Someone?
Second.
Wasteland Facility Report.
You've got Simon's?
Yep.
I've got nothing specific to add, other than that we had a major blockage on High Street, which cost us a couple of grand to get repaired. There's a situation where three homes are on the same service line. When the thing clogs, the two homes up above end up with the home at the bottom, and there was quite a bit of damage. I put an insurance claim in and have not heard back from them. I think they have been in touch with the owner. But we dug it up, repaired a piece of it that caused the blockage, and found another blockage and cleaned that one out. It's a, again, it's a private line, and we picked up the responsibility at the right-of-way, and that's where we dug and tried to clean it out. The three people need to talk to each other... Uh, the three people need to talk to each other a little bit about maybe doing something different. Uh, I think the recommendation for the property owner that got flooded is put in a backflow preventer. And I thought that was the recommendation. This one was flooded, uh, four years ago. Same, same situation. That was back before you passed the ordinance, which made the town responsible for anything inside the right of way.
Anything else on the report that you wanted to?
Nothing I need to highlight, no.
Vermont Railway Master License Agreement.
You remember, we talked about the Meadow, Willow Street Pump Station service area, which has a sewer line crossing under the railroad. They are not gonna give us a permit for that. They are asking for a master license. And this, what I gave you with the standard conditions, we haven't, they haven't written the master license yet. If you read the standard conditions, the one thing that they allow is a sleeve under the railroad, under the whole right of way, from right of way line to right of way line. And, uh, in this particular case, it's in a fill area, which is a little wider than their normal right of way. Uh, the engineers are looking for what the alternates that could be used to repair that pipeline. And if you look at the agreement, it says sleeve. Uh, there's two other solutions that, uh, engineers have proposed. One is lining the existing pipe with a liner. The other is, you know, putting in a pump station and a force main underneath the railroad instead of a gravity sewer, which means we get one more pump station we don't need. So we're, we're hung up until the railroad tells us what that we have to do. And the engineers tell me the railroad won't tell them what they have to do until after we have the master license. I did remind the person I was talking to that there was a local community who had problems with the master license. He assured me there were a lot of communities in Vermont who did not have problems with it. So probably at the next meeting, you may have a master license to consider with some thoughts from our engineer as to what it might cost us to meet all those conditions.
Could I suggest our lawyer look at this quick, too?
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Well, if they're gonna send us another one.
They're gonna, they're gonna send us the full license agreement, and this will be attached to it.
So this isn't everything?
That, that's just appendix B.
I definitely want our lawyer.
Wait till you see the agreement.
Yeah, 'cause some of the conditions in here seem a little bit over the top to me, but...
I think you have to remember that railroads get a lot more benefits from federal law and state law than any other property owner.
Yeah.
It's true.
You mean, it's, I, I'm afraid I would look at it as a, you wanna do it, you gotta sign it. Now Rutland somehow beat the system, I don't know, they just didn't do the work, right? They let the old pipe in place.
Yeah, it was a, it was a nightmare. It was, I think, they're not good at collaborating.
But as I say, there's a number of communities who have signed their so-called master license. What we've done today is that we've verified all of this, the pipelines that go across the railroad. So they have a, a good list of what we know is there. Uh, they thought they were there and listed them, and we found them, found them all.
Plus, they don't really like to take the, uh, risk of liability on anything that's done. Our liability, not theirs.
So, anyway, yes, this is just, this is just the first bite of the apple.
How wide is their right of way?
Normally, it's twenty-five feet either side of the center line of tracks, I believe. But if they've got a fill section, which I think there is up there, they may be to the toe of the slope. And if you put a sleeve in it, it has to go from right of way to right of way. The twenty-five feet is their so-called no-impact zone. If you're, if you've got anybody walking within twenty-five feet of the right of way, you have to tell them ahead of time, and they have to put conditions on the entry to do it. That, that's in the standard conditions. So this is just to alert you that something else is coming in order to build that project.
Anything else under Sewage Commissioners? I, I have something. So a few months ago, we talked about sending out the memo about the flushing of wipes, and we have not done that yet.
I said we would send it out with the tax bill.
You're gonna send it with the tax bill?
Yeah, I think Tom asked me to put it on the website.
Excellent, thank you.
And we have the second one. There's two of them out now.
Excuse me, since we're on that subject, is there, uh, can we put, uh, an ordinance, a rule, a regulation that they cannot flush?
You can do anything you want. But who's gonna enforce it?
Well, our people are gonna enforce it when they come and the line's plugged with them.
Where do they come from? Tom, I'm asking the questions because...
I, I, I know they talk about traps on lines to trap material that shouldn't come down the pipe. You know, I'm, I'm no sewer expert, I'm just asking questions. You know, there's a problem, can we do something about it?
Just publicize it as far as I'm concerned. I mean, when we get a block, it's wipes, and we had a couple, or three of them.
Yeah, one in front of my house, yeah.
And that's what it was, it was wipes. But you can't track it back to where they came from.
They could if they spent some time, they said.
How?
Putting traps on, on the sewer lines.
Put traps on the sewer lines?
Yes, that's what they told me.
You mean, Simon told you, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
We dig them all up and put traps on them? I'm being facetious, Tom, but the practicality of it is, is not there.
Okay, I'm just asking questions here, I don't wanna fight, okay?
I mean, I think if you found the blockage was at there, at the house, rather than, you know, then you can go, okay.
Exactly, yeah.
So that's where an ordinance would make sense.
Well, there must be some penalty for...
Did you maybe just announce that it's causing an issue and it's gonna cost taxes to go?
Right, yeah, and I think that's what they're doing with the, with the tax bills and the website to send.
Stop flushing wipes if you don't want more deaths.
Okay, move out of the Board of Sewage Commissioners to meeting, to appointments, um, officials.
Okay, I've highlighted, and they're the ones which need to be addressed this year. Uh, the chair, the vice chair, the water and sewer boards are taken care of. The zoning administrator, you acted at the last meeting to appoint me as the interim zoning administrator. And we talked at the last planning commission meeting about who we're doing, and I have a request to contact other towns. I've talked to some to find out what they are doing for it. So Stan Wilber is the zoning administrator, the planning board, nobody is due this year. So they all stay in place. Recreation Committee, Greg Cream King would like to be reappointed. Uh, John and Megan. And we would drop, uh, and Brian is a carryover. Uh, Cessar, Lisa Wright. Constable, Don Russell. Emergency Management Chair, Kevin Blongi, and I talked with him today. And he feels he will get back into it and be a little more active in what, what he's been doing. And reminded me that we need to update our plan before the first of May. Uh, Fence Viewer, I didn't talk to Bob about Fence Viewer, but it's not too many times we get a call. Albert Winta for the Fire Warden. Gail Curtis is the Health Officer. She is, needs to get in to see me to take her oath so that I can send it to the state. Tree Ward, Mr. Beatt is likely wanting to step down and has suggested that Tim Covey be appointed as the Tree Ward.
That's why you're here.
So you can interview him. I might suggest you might make Ray the Deputy Tree Warden, just so he doesn't get out of... Mary Fregosi is your representative to the Library Board, or there shouldn't be rep, it should be liaison, I think. Vamber Valley Transit, how Frank, Ray ever got in as a permanent appointee for that, I'm not sure, but he, he is, and he's very active in it. Uh, Solid Waste District, Kerry with John as the alternate. Regional ambulance, that's not up this year. Regional Planning Commission, Kerry with Dick Warner as the alternate. Transportation Council, Bruce with John as the alternate. And nine-one-one coordinator is Joe Bernier. Are there any other names that somebody would like to put into any of these positions?
I wanted to talk about this constable position for a moment. What, what does this entail? And tell me about this. Since we have the sheriff, what is this constable position?
The constable is a carryover for many, many years. A few years ago, the legislature took all law enforcement authority away from the constables unless they went to the certified school at the academy. Uh, Don did not go to the certified school, but a constable can serve papers. A constable can, uh, advise people when they are trespassing. Our current, current constable, uh, likes to go up on the library land and people coming over the top of the hill on the carriage trail, especially with dogs, uh, or snow machines, or some others. I got a laundry list someplace, I can send it out to you.
You can destroy rabid dogs if it's necessary, I think that's in the statute.
He's, you know, he's, he's not the dog warden, the sheriff is the dog warden, so that falls out of it. But there are some things that constable can do. But he can't, he doesn't carry a gun, so we don't pay insurance on him. And I don't, and he can't arrest anybody, and he can't investigate anything.
I, I just, I think that we need an animal control officer. I do not think that the sheriff is an appropriate animal control officer. I think it is a waste of our money having him do animal control, and he will only do dogs. And I think there are other issues out there. So I'm just kind of wondering if a constable could be doing that.
So Stan, I was just reading the duties of different town officers, and animal control can fall under the constable, if I was reading correctly. Um, they could be the animal control officer for the town.
Would he be willing to do that?
I don't know.
Would you have to carry insurance on them if you're sending them out to?
Yeah. I don't think so.
And what kind of, uh, equipment are you, are you required to? I mean, going out and getting someone's dog that's running, or even this cat in the neighborhood is not for the faint of heart.
It's, it's not, and it's not something that is readily done by the sheriff. I think that's the proper way to put that. And is it the, the best way to spend our hours for the sheriff?
What, what the sheriff does is investigate any bites.
If he does.
They do.
If they show up. No, they don't always show up.
If there is a bite recorded...
Well, a bite, but not for other stuff. They do not show up.
No.
So it, we have zero animal control, pretty much, unless there's a bite, or an aggressive dog.
If someone complains about a dog, then the sheriff's department will investigate it. But they're not gonna chase doggy bags around.
Well, no, what I'm talking about is there is a leash law.
Yes.
That is not enforced. There is, they're supposed to be registered. I asked last year about who wasn't registered and didn't hear anything. And I have not seen in any sheriff's report anywhere that the sheriff went and checked out the dogs that didn't get registered. There's a cat problem everywhere. You're not gonna call, the sheriff's not gonna do anything about that. I mean, we have some animal control problems. There was a fox problem. The sheriff did do something about that. So I think that's my concern, is that is this the best way to spend our sheriff hours? And the sheriff rarely does anything that's animal control, anyway. So who do people call? Because when, if you call the sheriff's, uh, department about a dog, sometimes they come, sometimes they don't. So what is the repercussion for somebody who has a dog that is constantly running loose, but nothing ever happens?
Has anybody filed a official complaint with their name at the bottom of it?
They have called the sheriff.
They called the sheriff, but are they willing to, to sign a complaint?
I don't think the sheriff offers such thing, 'cause the sheriff doesn't show up.
I will, I will check on that, because on the one we had on Gibb Street, the neighbors actually signed a complaint.
That was an aggressive dog, and it took quite a while.
Yes, they, until somebody signed the complaint. But unless the sheriff witnesses a violation of the ordinance, there's nothing they can do, other than talk to people.
But they're not even really doing that.
They're not doing that.
And the Gibb Street issue, also because I'm involved in school, the officer did not even offer to have a complaint signed the course few times.
Exactly.
So it was not until it was aggressive in someone's driveway, and they realized that it had to be signed. So it, that, that, I don't know if they don't offer it every time, but I know in that particular instance, because the school is involved, it was not.
I was aware, we had to sign a complaint until this came up. Uh, I, I thought a call of the sheriff was more than enough. Well, I don't think many people know this.
And they do not offer that at all, if they respond. They do not ask that at all. I mean, I've had, I've called the sheriff myself about a dog that killed somebody's entire, almost the entire population of chickens. And not once was there asking about anything else from me or anybody. So I, and it's not just that. There's a leash law in this town, and it is not abide by. There, you're supposed to register your dog, that doesn't happen, and nobody investigates. So I'm just asking, is the sheriff the way we want to go? Because is that really how we, one, wanna spend our hours or our money on the sheriff chasing dogs? Or do we wanna find somebody that will do this?
I can check with Don to see if he would take it on. I'm not gonna defend the sheriff anymore, because you're not gonna... So I will invite the sheriff to come back again, so you can talk to the sheriff about what he does and what he doesn't do.
Well, I, I think that's pointless, to be honest, because he will tell us that he does this, this, and this, and we need an ordinance for that, that, and that. Like the parking issue, really? It's, it's against the law to park on the sidewalk, but you're not gonna ticket anybody on the sidewalk. It's against the law to park facing the wrong way that your traffic is going. But unless it's in the ordinance, he's not gonna give a ticket.
Right.
That's the state law. So it doesn't make sense to me that we have to keep doing all these ordinances for him to do his job, or for... I mean, one day, they were parked on the sidewalk doing radar. Really? Really?
Today, in front of the...
Again. I mean, come on. Come on. So Stan, if you check with Don, and I mean, it's kind of a huge responsibility for him for...
Well, that, I mean, I'm gonna need, is he willing to take it on?
Right, he may not be, but is that something we should consider?
You can have first constable, second constable, so before we duel away with Don, I mean, it seems like...
Oh, yeah, no, I...
That's the responsibility of something you're asking a constable to do, that's probably going to need to be a paid position.
Right, and I'm not saying get rid of him, I'm just saying, don't put this task on him. You know, I'd rather be constable without this worry. I'm not saying to do that, but I'm saying that we either need to figure out some way to deal with animal control, because it's also the same way if the sheriff sits here and watches people let their dogs duck in the park and does nothing. So I guess that's my thing. That's my spiel. Do you have anything else to say? Okay, so...
Okay, I will, you know, talk with Don.
Okay.
To see if he wants to take under his wing animal control. And skip back to you.
He might have some suggestions for it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
A different route to go.
Yeah.
He's been in the business a long time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they need, like, I mean, if you're going after vicious dogs all the time, you need like a taser, you might need a gun if it's like a rabid skunk or something, you know what I mean? It's like, it's a lot of responsibility.
You know, maybe a vehicle or...
Right, yeah. To impound them.
Yeah.
But a rabid wildlife animal would be Vermont Fishing Day.
Be the health officer also.
Yes.
The town health officer.
Good luck, y'all.
Not in the city, it's not.
I'll get it for Christmas.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion to approve all these? Or they just...
No, well, yes, you need a motion to appoint.
Is there a motion to appoint all of those members that we just went over? With the exception of Tim Covey into Ray Beatt's position for tree warden.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Don't cut them all down, Tim.
I'm gonna abstain.
All right. Or it'll decide. The next is planning for the coronavirus and the impacts.
This is an email with a bunch of attachments that I got, and Kevin Longi asked if we needed him here today, tonight, to talk about it.
Thank you, Tim.
And I didn't think we did, as to what you want. Bruce has had a talk with Stephanie, and maybe you can relate what you're looking for.
Yeah, what they're looking for is mainly a plan to look through our officials and officers. If something came along, a pandemic or something, it isn't just because of this virus. But, you know, what would happen if Celia and Rhoda were sick?
All right.
Something happened to, you know, town manager, two or three of us on the select board got tied up with something, you know? What's our plan?
Stan, is there anything from when H-1N-1 was a big threat? Was anything done then?
No.
No.
Nothing I'm aware of, no.
We do have hands, Stan.
We do an annual emergency management plan, and what Bruce is talking about probably would not be a bad thing to include in there.
Yeah.
And that has to be updated before the first of May. In fact, Kevin talked to me today about getting together the emergency management team to review the plan and make any changes that need to be made.
And involve the health officer.
No problem, I'll let her know.
Did you think it'd be a good idea to involve the schools in this type of... Historically, they're just involved without any interaction.
Yeah.
With the children's center, or their home.
That's usually on there, as, not as a place to go, but as a, what do I wanna say?
Resource?
No.
I'll think of the same word that you're thinking about.
Yes, persons, no...
Vulnerable.
Vulnerable population, so there are three daycares on the vulnerable population.
And they're all listed where they are, what contact people are, those are the types of things that are listed, but the one is to...
But this, but this thing is mainly, you know, for the town thing, you know, it had a mess of firemen, but we have mutual aid, so that kinda covers that aspect of it.
Did you get the email from the league about the training Wednesday? There is a, like a webinar Wednesday that's on.
Webinar, yes.
Yeah. That addresses this for, like, management leaders and municipalities and stuff, so...
What time is it, Judy?
Eleven? Yeah, it's like eleven, yeah.
Okay. No further discussion on that? Okay, Beaver Pond.
Beaver Pond, what's in your packet is, one, the letter that we got from the state saying this is a private pond, and two is the opinion by our attorney as to what it means. What it means is the select board has, the town has complete control over the pond. The rec committee talked about it at their, Beaver Pond Committee talked about it at their meeting, and they're gonna have their ordinance reviewed at the next meeting. The question is, you own all the land around the pond, the discussion with the meeting related to two property owners who store equipment on the town property, and how to handle that. And I think that that's something that the board needs to talk about. Do you write a rule that, no, leaving in boats on town property? I mean, you come in, you park there, you launch your canoe, you go for paddle, when you come back, you don't tie it to a tree and go home, you take it with you. So, this is something to think about, because what they're gonna come back to you is some recommendations as to how to handle it.
Parks and Rec is going to, that's what?
No.
Beaver Pond.
Sorry.
So it's nothing we have to decide tonight?
Not until they bring some changes to the ordinance back to you.
Okay.
But this is just to put it in, and one thing that they did say, that if the select board did take an action, that it get hand-carried and not sent certified mail.
So, in the ordinance, what you're saying is, they would need to change floats and boats?
Be no overnight storage of any equipment.
Which, right.
Not necessarily, maybe, but it would be town-wide that you couldn't leave anything overnight.
Correct.
That it had to be removed when you removed. And that's the way I was thinking it could go.
Yes.
The other question is...
And on your own property.
Yeah. The other question is grandfathering. Do your grandfather, the two that have been living around a long, for years and years and years?
Let's see what the Beaver Pond Committee...
What'd you say?
Let's see what the Beaver Pond Committee...
Let them come in with a recommendation, and then you can hash it over.
Okay. Thanks. Notice of sale of real property, tax property sales.
Okay, Sam Grandchamp has asked for permission to...
We skipped...
Yes, we skipped that.
Oh, town plan review.
Yeah, the use agreement.
No, the facilities use is under Beaver Pond, private pond.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, I didn't see it in here. It's not in the...
No, I don't see it.
It's not in here, because I don't have it yet.
Okay.
But what he has done, and he went, and I thought I would have it, but I didn't have it for you, what he has done, he went to the committee Beaver Pond Committee meeting, and they are gonna have a fishing clinic in May, early May, and they think they're gonna get some fish to stock. What Sam is looking for is later on in the summer, and he's gonna do a derby, not a clinic. He's gonna have prizes and giveaways and stuff like that. And the committee essentially said, as long as you stay away from our weekend, get far enough away, so he is proposing the January, June 27th, which tentatively the committee was agreeable to the date, but have not seen it, or the insurance certificate will go with it. So, I'm waiting for him to get back to me. He sent one to me, but it wasn't signed, and it wasn't, didn't have the insurance certificate on it. But the date right now is on hold, that he's gonna, if he goes ahead with it.
The chairman of the Beaver Pond Committee feels there's a few issues that need to be worked out with this gentleman before...
Are they fully agreed to?
Yes.
That's correct. All right. Town Plan Review.
I know you approved it at the last meeting, but I just put it back on the agenda, in case there is anybody who wants to change any words or anything in here. The select board has the authority to make changes. If they are significant, the plan has to go back to the Planning Commission. So if you've got some changes, let's talk about it.
I don't have anything yet, I haven't finished reading it yet.
You haven't finished?
Still reading it.
Well, you have a, you have a hearing coming up on the 13th, it's open for discussion at the meeting, at your hearing, and any changes could come out of that. And again, if there are any changes that the select board proposes after they have their hearing, if they're significant, they have to go back to the Planning Commission. If they're insignificant, like somebody left out a word, or a comma, or a period, you can correct that without an issue. So...
When is that hearing again?
Hearing is on April, on April 13th. It will be in the paper next Wednesday.
Right. Back sale properties.
They are in the paper. We've had two people who have picked up the bid sheets and the information, so we'll see what happens when it comes. One guy was griping a little bit that the minimum was too high, and I said, well, if they don't sell the first time, then the select board may go out and just say, make us the best offer you can, see what happens after that, in order to get them disposed. If you remember, they have, you have to notify people that you intend to sell for 30 days before you can actually sign the deeds. And these people, I mean, it's in the request for bids, but it's camouflaged under statute something. And so I have to explain what the statute is. That's the same thing you had with the Chetman, if you had decided to sign an offer, it had to wait for 30 days before it could be in effect.
Which property were they questioning?
Lot upon Chatterton Park. As to whether it's worth the $27,000 that's listed in there. So we will see.
All right. Social media.
Social media. This was in the League of Cities and Towns magazine, I don't know whether you all are receiving that now, you should, you aren't getting it yet? I got your copy here then. But anyway, social media, and I guess it's just something to read, it's really not anything to act on. This is how you use social media, if you're using it, and Kerry sends an email to Ben saying, you know, let's have a meeting about the police department or the traffic rules, and Ben sends it on to Judy and say, what do you think about this? Then we're in trouble.
Yeah.
Or even if you post something on Facebook, and people start chiming in, liking it, not liking it, and making comments. It's basically, I mean, you can use all of those as a forum to post something, just don't...
Discuss.
Chat about it, yeah, like...
As long as three members of the select board aren't answering, aren't doing something together.
Like our member at a time.
As long as you're doing it for an agenda or meeting, you're not discussing business.
Right. But some people do.
Well, you can do it as long as you're setting an agenda and getting a meeting date.
Yeah.
So it's basically, it's a good additional forum, but not a replacement for the ones we normally...
Good reminder.
Okay.
And the other one is, select board tablets, there is a quote in there from Pat Curtis, at $339 apiece, for this particular one, I don't know whether this is a good machine or not.
It's a good machine, it just seems high for a Chromebook.
Yeah, it seems high.
It's about a hundred dollars high.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. When I saw it, I did a double take.
Yeah.
See, I don't know what a Chromebook, whether there's different, this is what, a 14-inch, whether there's a smaller one or a larger one.
Can I just, let me just get some numbers.
Yeah, that would be great.
It should be about $240, $245.
Yeah. I mean, the last one I bought was just barely over $200.
Mine too, just barely over $200, like $225.
And it's a decent Chromebook, so...
It was a touchscreen, but...
Right, no, I don't need that. Yeah, we don't need a touch display.
You don't need a touchscreen?
No. Not for a Chromebook, Chromebooks have keyboards.
Okay, so you can scroll up and down off the keyboard, rather than on a touchscreen.
And it has a little trackpad, too, like a mouse, so, I think we went a little too Cadillac on these.
I always try to go Cadillac.
I always try to...
In anticipation of what the techies might think about when they get here on the board.
So I'll take a look, and I'll bring some information.
And the other one on the email addresses, I'm working with Paul to get it set up so that we can do it, and we're going with Microsoft Office, which is, again, five bucks an address, rather than, and not going with Comcast, which was, could be, end up more.
Now, since we're talking about, that young gentleman gave a little spiel at the end of the town meeting about a fiber network.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything more from him.
Maybe ask the Planning Commission or something to talk to him a little bit, see what, I, you know, great idea, like a lot more details if we're gonna get involved in...
There are a number of these districts in the state.
Yeah.
Of course, the biggest one was Burlington, and they folded.
But they're back.
Well, they sold out to a private enterprise.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you mind asking Dick to...
Yeah.
If we could invite that gentleman, or some representative?
Let's see if I got his name, I don't think I do, but I can...
Well, good for you.
I think, was that meant for you guys?
I don't think we have anything to...
We don't, because it's after the 11th, when we find out what grants...
Okay.
We may or may not get.
What, Pittsburgh may or may not?
Yes.
And I did get an email from Mary Ann saying she'd like to be involved in the discussion.
Mary Ann?
Westrow.
Gillette?
Who, what?
Um, Pittsburgh's not interested, they've already told me that, 'cause I asked them straight up. It's too far for them to go, apparently, but I'll have John call her.
Yeah, that's, you know...
That's John's...
She's not happy with Sheriff.
Oh, I know Westrow's not happy either.
Okay, you have fraud risk assessment, Stan?
We have a meeting this Friday, and if you're available, to meet with our auditors to make, get the first step out of the way as far as a fraud assessment.
Are there any questions that anybody wants to ask, or put in the fraud assessment? 'Cause that was in the email.
Celia, you know, Rhoda might have something I don't...
Yeah, they'll be in... Well, see, they'll be part, Rhoda, Celia, John, myself, Kerry, I invited Josh Webb, he can't make it on Friday, because he spends a lot of money, too, for the fire department. The sewer and water, I'm gonna rely on John to interface with them, rather than having them part of the discussion, because they deal with it all. You know, I see their invoices, they call me before they buy any large equipment, but are they buying something for themselves? I'm not sure. Are they, are they selling the water meters? That's scrap metal. I didn't say that to them.
Yeah, you did.
I don't, I don't know if we're selling scrap metal out of the pit down there, but that's part of the things that will come up as part of this meeting, is, who has the opportunity, and this opportunity, and the other, what's the other word that they use? Oh, I, I deserve it.
I deserve it, yes.
You don't pay me enough, so therefore, this is how I get my extra pay.
So, and John is on the rec committee too, right?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that's, they get money, too, for this.
The town office bid results and budget?
Okay, you've got the bid summary. The low bid was Giancola at $372, $870. If you take all of the deduct items, you probably can subtract about $20,000 off of that, which would get you down to about $322, and I think if you look at the estimate that we had from before, construction estimate was $347. This is with a total project of $395, so we're in, right now, over budget. right now over budget. Uh, Ed Clark was going to speak with, uh, Giancola to see if there are other areas where we can pare down the cost to bring it down within the construction budget. We've looked at the other two budgets, the soft cost and the relocation and fit-up costs. And we, you know, we can find a thousand here and a thousand there, but it's not, not big numbers. So right now we're waiting for Ed Clark to come back to us after his discussions with Giancola. So you may get called for a special meeting. The nice part about Giancola's bid, if you noticed, was they're ready to move in.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
So that mobilization date is two weeks from the date of this report, or?
Yeah, they, well, that's, that's what they're proposing from the.
Two days, two weeks from the date we say, go ahead.
That they submitted the bid, but. That's something to be negotiated, but we end up there. So that's, that's where it is. It'll have to come back to the board, uh, for a contract. And I would assume when, when we come back, it'll be within budget.
May I ask you a question? Well, what do we anticipate the new furniture is when we move back in? We're not getting rid of this case. Are we buying new?
Buying new desks.
New desks?
Yes.
And are we looking at, um, surplus from the state or buying brand-new desks?
Yes. That's what's budgeted.
Well, right, and we just said we need to look at the budget, so.
I think we have lived long enough with junk without having to live any longer with it. That's my personal opinion.
Well, can we at least take a look at what might be available? If we didn't see someone?
We can, we can go to middle section, look at what they've got, you know.
Well, how many desks just upstairs here we bought? I mean, five thousand dollars worth of desks is, is what?
Only what, four?
Rhoda, Celia.
Actually, the two downstairs are the only ones that really need to be replaced.
Just the two downstairs.
But, uh, you know, it'd be nice to have matching equipment. It'd be nice to have equipment that is shiny and new at least once in a life.
Well, I, I remember, um.
A lot of things are nice, but when you have to live within a budget, I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, but I think that, you know, there are things that you don't just throw them out just because you're remodeling. I mean, if we need to have something to replace it, I understand that, but just because it needs to be new because we're remodeling, I, I, I.
I think it's time that the downstairs had a decent place to work, and I'll say that in fun, in right out. Do it.
That's fine. I'm asking.
There are too many people, there are too many people who have said, that's good enough for you. You don't need anything any better. And I hope you don't say that to them.
You know what, Stan, I'm not, I'm asking you what six thousand dollars I want.
I don't know what it's gonna buy, but we put it in the budget.
Okay, I would think if I, if I was putting something together to replace equipment, I have to provide a list of what that is. If it's computers, if it's desks, if it's chairs. I, I'm sorry, how does that become unreasonable and get your ire up so much?
Like you get your ire up.
So Stan, if the budget goes forward, will you break it down, like say, we need three desks and a table? A computer table or something like that? Will it be broken out that way? And also an alternative, just because I know over at the PD, um, I can't remember where it came from. There was a place that had closed and all the furniture was brand-new. And basically they like donated it or got it much cheaper. So I didn't know if that alternative is out there too, just to help you guys.
I don't know if it's out there. We, we put a number in the budget, how we, what we buy and how we buy it.
Right, so it's that budget at six thousand, it could easily come back at three thousand.
Fine, you take a thousand out of there and we put it up above, but that's not gonna help the situation very much.
Right.
And what I'm doing is saying, when we, when we end up moving back in, let's have decent equipment.
Right.
And decent furniture.
But chances are we could get three desks cheaper than six thousand dollars.
Well, I'm sure you can get three desks cheaper than six. I don't know what's in that three thousand. That's a number. And you won't spend it until you see what we're buying with.
So then we'll have this agreement back for us to sign and approve?
I'm hoping that we may have a special meeting if we come up with a number and we're within budget.
What, what ballpark completed inspection, completion date be?
They have an estimate, twenty-two weeks.
Uh, what was the, it's in the schedule?
Twenty-two weeks.
Okay, we're gonna lock them into that, right?
Yes.
That, none of this is taking into consideration what we might get from the grant?
The grant is subtracted from the amount to be bonded. It's not to, it's not money that we can use in place of bond money. That's the way it was voted, was that the, any grants would reduce the three hundred and thirty thousand bond, bond. So that grant money is, is gonna reduce the bond amount and not the project amount.
Project, yeah. Okay, yeah, for good.
Okay, easement deed?
Okay, we have an easement from Gian, from, uh, Casella for construction. And that's in the packet, so that one is signed, so we can build and inform the contractor that he has got space to work around it.
And thank them for that. That was nice of them.
We talked about the boundary line adjustment. Again, I think I mentioned the last one, and they're looking at their marketing program before they do anything as far as the boundary line.
The temporary office lease up at the.
Yeah, I just got that today. I sent it over to Alan George to review. Uh, this is for use of the museum office space.
One correction here, they have it going from April first, twenty twenty, to October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
That's taken an old recent cut of the paper, yes.
Extra, but.
Huh?
Yeah, I mean, just extra time, but.
No, he's.
That's going back to two thousand eighteen.
So he's there, they're going backwards. See?
We're going back in time.
Yeah.
I don't know. They must have meant twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And they, and they have it through October first, twenty twenty in section four. It's just a typo, I'm sure.
I feel these prices could be negotiated a little bit better too.
That honestly, the, the square footage rate is, is pretty reasonable. And that's what's going, like even property in Rutland is going for five dollars a square foot.
Taking the tour, see what we had to do to move in.
Oh, I, I did take the tour.
Okay.
Yeah, the one thing that we talked about in the easement is that we would do the cleanup. Rather than, because they don't have.
They would do the cleanup, you said?
We would.
Or we would?
Yeah, we would do the cleanup.
At our cost?
At our cost.
What would the cleanup involve?
Mopping, vacuuming, wiping down, cleaning up, replacing ceiling tiles that are out.
So making it like office-ready and all that would be on us, you know, for six months.
Yes.
That's why I thought we could do this a little bit better on the price.
And I agree as well.
And I, I think they would be.
I don't, I don't, I think what he said to us, or said to me when I was talking with him on the phone is they don't have any cash.
So they can't do the work themselves?
They have no money to do this type of work.
So what if we agreed to a six-month lease, we did the work, we prepared and we got, we paid nothing? I mean, we're making it a nice office space for them to use after we're moved out.
They're gonna tear it down.
Yeah, block the railroad.
This is the right of way.
This is the right of way of the railroad.
Twenty-nine eighty, is that?
Oh, okay.
They've got no, they've got no reason to fix it up.
Yeah.
Oh.
We were talking up there.
No, not the white house, oh, no.
Okay.
We still have a fielder out to Casella about using the space over here. I haven't heard back. I, I sent an email to them saying, is there any update on this usage? I mean, they've been busy moving stuff in over there now for Murkowski uh, to set up a hemp something plant.
Oh, really?
Yeah, downstairs.
All kinds of construction going on there.
Yeah. And I'm supposed to be getting a letter telling us what, to give to the planning commission, saying what they are doing over there and what they propose to do.
Have they done quite a bit interior already?
Moved a lot of equipment in, I think.
I saw it lately, yeah.
There hasn't been smoke coming out the windows or anything, as you know.
This is not processing the raw product. This is.
A lot of people in the marketplace.
So we've answered them?
What?
We've answered the people up the hill then?
We're out up there.
And we've answered them. We've told them.
They, they, they know. They came in after the tour over there to see if we might coming back, but they're, they're more looking at a permanent use and not a temporary. They're, they're not gonna do anything for temporary use.
Right, I understand that. I, I just made sure that we're telling them.
But I think the, you know, the sentiment here is, uh, people want this building to be used. And I think we talked at the last meeting is that we spend the money to use it.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean I have to agree with it.
The inexpensive way of going up there, that we use this building.
I'd like to take a closer look at this since we just got it tonight and revisit it when we.
Well, I mean, before we bring it back to the board for a signature, it will be a balanced budget.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm talking about the lease.
Oh, the lease, yeah. Well, let's wait till Alan gets his words back on him.
The Vermont Arts Council Public Art Design Grant?
Uh, the application is completed, ready for a approval, and I will change the signature block uh, to send it in.
Did you get my email?
I got yours. You, you cleaned up my language. Other than that, whether we have a winning application or not, I'm not sure. But I played heavy on the history as much as I could. And you played on civic involvement, so. Uh, I'll, let me print this out so you can sign it, and then I'll submit it tomorrow. And thank you for going back in and looking at it, because I can't proofread stuff on the screen for some reason. I just can't do it. These are all, I found no way to print this stuff out. So a motion to apply the grant, that would be in order.
Okay, is there a motion to submit the grant?
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No junk in junk vehicles?
Uh, I asked for a report on the status of all the ones that we had. And I got a letter back from my deputy saying that, uh, he hasn't gotten to it. And he's got letters that he had to hand out that he hasn't handed out. He did pick up one today that came back on returned mail on West Street, way down on West Street with a mud puddle and to hand carry. So he's got one more to hand carry.
So how many months has this been in his hands now that we're waiting on?
December.
December?
Well, December when he brought, he sent us the original list. Uh, the board acted on it in January. The letters went out. And, uh, the next, six of them got returned. We heard from the four that complied with what we asked them to do. And, uh, there were six letters that got returned. Couple didn't, that took them but haven't done any. That's what I'm asking him to check on.
So in, in that amount of time that he is in proctor, he couldn't have checked on these vehicles or delivered anything?
I don't answer for him anymore.
I guess that just makes my point about the coverage that we get, what we pay for.
It's, you know, what you pay for. The interesting thing will be what's, what other arrangements are available from another, an agency.
Um, just, uh, came in on the West Road today. The, the house way out on the end of the West Road. The, the snow's gone now, so.
Thank you.
Our junk is back.
The snow is gone.
Yeah, that nice blanket.
Covers a multitude.
Yeah, and maybe in a future meeting we could.
Well, you, you have your nuisance ordinance and that could be what come into play. I think there's a question as to what is junk. It'd be the junk vehicle, the pickup up and back. There's no question. The other one hasn't moved for three weeks. I'm not sure of, uh, but the toys that are laying on the lawn.
Well, let's save that for a future meeting.
Uh, town manager search? So the ads are done. It's up on the website. And was she still waiting for?
I've got an email from, from you that was responding to her. And I was waiting to talk with you before, she called, she left a message for me. I called her back, but I didn't hear back from her.
Okay.
But it does say that has, has been advertised.
Yeah, I think she, well, she was gonna advertise it and she was, she wanted, um, I think on the website, a different tab to basically say, you know, job position or posting. And I told her we should just move it up to the top of the website rather than creating a whole new. So people don't have to scroll all the way down to find that. Like, it's right there when you open it up. I think that would just.
I can put it right in after good stuff.
Right, and I haven't heard back from her since I sent that.
Hey, could we make it, you know, a little bit bolder, a little bit in the, the standard thoroughfare there?
Yeah, I can put a bold on it. I probably can't do it in red though.
Like an alert. Orange, great. Okay, uh, let's see. And then, I don't know if you wanted, did you want to address this accounting auditing financial report now?
This is part of the application for, uh, the accessibility grant. This is the last item that's needed before they make the grant offer to us. We have to have a, uh, accounting auditing and financial reporting policy. The first two pages are from the League of Cities and Towns model ordinance, which I just plagiarized and put it out in front of you. The last opt-in pages on the manual is something that has been, uh, worked up downstairs. Not recently, but in the past, uh, we updated it to put in new titles, especially the town manager involvement. And this is a procedures manual and not a policy. What I'm asking you to do is to adopt the policy so that I can download that into the, into the system. And hopefully that will be the last thing we need for them to offer the grant. And again, we can't sign the contract until the grant has been signed, so.
So you just need a motion to approve this?
We need a motion to approve that.
Is there a motion to approve the accounting auditing and financial reporting policy? I'll take the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the, I got signature pages in a folder here in front of Bruce for all, for all the stuff that you've done tonight.
Okay.
And if you can find the budget report, you can review it, but it's not in.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna be looking a lot.
Because I looked at the policy and it says I only have to do it monthly.
Well, you do a pretty good job with it, I meant monthly.
Well, the other thing when I was reading this policy is there's one report you're not getting, which is the revenue report. As to whether revenue is meeting budget stipulations and whether you should be concerned that we're gonna get enough money. So Syria and I have talked about that. I used to be able to go in and take it off. I can't find what I had before, so we gotta find a new way to get. So we show the taxes that are budgeted and the taxes that we received, uh, the other items for what the budget was and what we received.
Alright, Sheriff Department report. I got, I have nothing else left to say, but nope. Do you think, and I don't want, I don't want every line item like this, but do you think when there's something that's kind of like a major stand-up, they can put the location? I mean, it may not matter, but I kind of, I don't know. Like the burglary or, you know, the needles or, just to like, okay, is this like on one end of town or is this on another end of town?
We can ask for a locate, we asked for simplified language so that they didn't use code gibberish that we can't understand.
And some of them do, like they, there was one in here where they said to assist on North Street, you know, something like that, but even just South Street or Meadow Street or versus.
They did mention Meadow Street in here one point. And I don't know where, well, and they did North Street with the, the kid was locked, locked inside the house.
Right, I saw that. That's the one, yeah.
No, I'm, it's somewhere in here.
That's where some of their time goes. That's where some of their time goes because they.
Right, I know, well, the processing takes time and then they're left, they're out of here, so they can't, there's nothing they can do about it.
People said to go to court once in a while for this stuff.
Or every time they rent a ticket, they have to go to, well, if it's contested, they have to go to court.
It's in here when they go, yeah.
And if, if they don't go to court, it's an automatic waiver.
Right.
And they did issue a ticket for cell phone use, thank you.
The only thing I had on here was the directed patrol at the five-way intersection, 9:30 to 10:00.
A lot of kids go to school at 10 o'clock or whatever.
I'm like, really? What were you directing?
Turn a kid's car.
But okay.
It's just a place to stop for a while.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.